Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. Invited guests, individuals that are joining us today for our public work session, want to welcome you. Also want to take a moment to acknowledge our city manager, Mr. Stephen Carter, Deputy City Attorney, Mr. Derek Challenger, and of course, our city clerk, Mr. Stephen White. Thank you all for being here, and thanks to my colleagues for being here. With that, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Ms. Bryant.
Present.
Dr. Dotson.
Here.
Mr. Hugo.
Present.
Mr. Moody is absent. Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Tillage.
Here.
Mayor Glover.
Here. Mr. Carter. Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being with us this evening. We have a couple of presentations for you this evening. The first one is going to be by Ms. Anna McCray. She's leading our emergency management group. She's going to give us a presentation on the hurricanes of the upcoming hurrican-- oh, I guess we're in the hurricane season now, so.
Yeah.
And then followed by Dr. Russell, who'll give us some information on some of the zoning amendments that we may propose for entertainment venues around our city. So first, Ms. Anna McCray.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the city council, Mr. Manager, city staff, and members of the city of Portsmouth community. My name is Anna McCray, and I serve as your Deputy Coordinator of Emergency Management and here to talk to you about our 2025 hurricane season to help with awareness and fill you in on some of the planning efforts across the community. So before we can look forward, we'll look backwards at the 2024 season, which was the third most expensive hurricane season on record. We had 18 named storms with five major hurricanes. The five landfalls that we had were all along the U.S. Gulf Coast. We didn't have any primary eastern seaboard strikes, save Debbie, who made a secondary landfall in South Carolina. The first half of the season was very quiet. We only had six named storms before September 10th, which is the traditional midpoint of the hurricane season, but we had a very busy back half of the season with 12 named storms, the most notable of which being Helene and Milton. Debbie was the most impactful for our region directly. We saw more inland flooding. The majority of the state was under some sort of tornado watch or tornado warning for more than 36 hours, which hasn't happened with a tropical system before. But of course, Helene is the one that most everybody will remember the 2024 season for. But now that we move forward into the 2025 season, we actually have our first named tropical system. Andrea was born this afternoon. She's well out in the Atlantic. She's not going to cause us any problems. But, you know, we're looking at a 60% probability of a busy season with 13 to 19 storms, six to 10 hurricanes, and three to five major hurricanes. Of particular note, on that names list is Nestor, and I have spoken to the fire chief directly, and he's assured me that it will be gentle rainstorm if we get that far in the year. But there are a lot of influencing factors that come into how busy our hurricane season is going to be. Right now, we're moving towards a more neutral between El Nino and La Nina season, so we kind of are swinging into our end season. And the difference in the seasons is that with El Nino years, we get the warm water that's just off of the-- or in the mid-Pacific drifts towards the western South American coast, and it gets pulled northward. When this happens, this strengthens the Pacific jet stream, so this makes it so that we see more rain in the southern U.S. It's cloudier, so that results in cooler temperatures over the Atlantic. Because the jet stream is moving faster, it cuts the top off of these developing storms. So El Nino years, we don't see a whole lot of heavy hurricane development. But in La Nina years, the years that we're just coming off of, there are stronger trade winds, so the Pacific gets cool, which pushes the Pacific jet stream further north, so this allows for warmer temperatures, fewer clouds, less rain in the continental U.S. It also allows the Atlantic Ocean to get warmer because we don't have more rain coming off of the, you know, off of the east coast. So we see stronger hurricanes because there's less wind shear to cut off the tops of those storms, so we see more development. As we're moving into these neutral years, it's just kind of average. Just kind of the winds are doing what they're going to do, and we're, you know, seeing average rainfall amounts, average temperatures, nothing really super spectacular. So we know that it's shifting because we're monitoring the sea temperatures in the Pacific when we see a certain threshold, usually .9 degrees Fahrenheit, over a given period of time for, let's say it's three months overlapping in five-month increments, so January, February, March, February, March, April, so on and so forth. We can predict out what the temperatures in the Pacific are going to be, which helps us get a good idea for what the hurricane season here in the Atlantic is looking like. But it doesn't matter how many storms they tell us we're going to have, because it only takes one. And most importantly, it's the one that affects our community. It's the one that affects your family that is the most impactful. So we want to make sure that we're focusing on more than just the forecast cone, right, that we see with the National Weather Service or the National Hurricane Center. We want to focus on all of the hazards that come along with any of these tropical weather systems. So part of that is enhancing communication products and making sure that the public is aware of the threats and hazards. So one of the changes that we see this year are improvements to the forecast cone. So the forecast cone, cone of death, cone of error, whatever you want to call it, is basically taking the spaghetti models, right, that you've heard of, and it looks at five-year averages and sees where the center of a storm may go. Two-thirds of the time, the center of the storm will stay within the forecast cone, and a third of the time, it'll wander its way outside of the cone. But every year, the data gets better, so this means that the cone gets more and more narrow, so we're able to see where the center of the storm is going to go. But that only tells a story about the center of the storm. It doesn't talk about tornadoes, or rain, or rainfall amounts, or flooding, or anything else, so it just gives us an idea of where it's going to go. The National Hurricane Center is adding additional information about rip currents. We saw in the 2024 season, an astounding number of rescues and fatalities, unfortunately, from rip currents, because we have people that aren't familiar with that narrow band of water, how quickly it can pull you away from the shore, people panic, and they drown. So the National Hurricane Center is focused on making sure that people understand that even storms like Isaac that you see down here in the lower right-hand side, more than 1,100 miles off of the east coast, still caused thousands of rescues, needed to be, you know, affected last year, as that storm passed well off the coast. But the risk of rip currents is something that we need to be aware of. The National Hurricane Center is also taking advantage of other offices that live within the National Weather Service, such as the Water Office. So they're able to pull in information on the probabilistic precipitation portal, it's a mouthful to say at 3:00 in the morning, where we can see the possibility of flash flooding, of inland flooding, of heavy rainfall. So we want to make sure that we're making the public very aware of those additional risks. Since last year, the National Hurricane Center has been able to give us these potential tropical cyclone heads up. Think of it as dealing with our current extreme heat event. We've been watching this since Thursday of last week, so we knew it was going to be hot, we knew the timing, the Weather Service gave us a really good heads up on that. A PTC does basically the same thing, but now, instead of only 48 hours heads up, that we're looking at a rapid intensification of a storm system, we have 72 hours, because the data is getting better, the science is getting better. So we're able to start our outreach a little bit sooner as we're watching the development of these storms. Talked a little bit about the forecast cone. One of the big differences that is permanent now is on the left-hand side, the legacy cone. You see where it's got the hurricane warning in red, right there along the Florida Big Bend. Somebody may assume that I only have to worry about hurricane impacts if I'm right here at the coast. Well, beginning last year in an experimental phase, and now as a permanent addition, the National Hurricane Center can pull in the information that you see on the right side of the screen, which is all of the local weather field offices' watches and warnings. So you can see with Helene, the impact that they were predicting, as Helene was still down off the western Cuban coast of the potential for hurricane-type conditions well into Georgia, tropical storm conditions well into western North Carolina and southwestern Virginia. So hopefully, this helps paint the picture so that the public is better aware of the different threats and hazards. But your local emergency management office can't do this alone. We have so many partners that are engaged with us. For example, with VDOT, we have constant communication with them about traffic impacts, about what their, the status on all of their different construction projects are. So we attended a briefing with state agencies about four weeks ago, and VDOT gave us kind of this rundown of where they are with their current construction projects that affect our area. They also do continuous training and exercises, of course, continuous maintenance on their infrastructure. They completed a hurricane lane reversal exercise back on June 1st. They completed tide gate testing on the HRBT and the Midtown Tunnel back in April and May. There are no tide gates on the downtown tunnel or the Monitor Merrimack, but they do continuous maintenance and, you know, observe the water flow and things along those infrastructure. Dominion Energy is another fantastic partner. They offer us great communications. They came out and met with leadership about three weeks ago now, and we want to make sure that we understand how the power gets turned back on, and that's one of their primary messages that they want to share, is making sure that the first thing they need to do is check their generation facilities and make sure that the product or that the facility is able to be up and running. They have to repair those major transmission lines and then repair the substations. They then repair the distribution lines, which gives us priority with different public health and public safety, critical infrastructure that we have documented out with them as to what the city needs to have turned back on first. Then they get down to the neighborhood level, and then they get down to repairing the individual customer service lines. But this is very much a 24/7 operation. So they'll start during the daytime, because of course, working with electricity is inherently dangerous, and they want to do as much activity as they can during daylight hours, so from sunup to sundown. They're delivering the packages to the work crews that need to go out, doing their briefings, getting the fixes done. They have continual patrol teams monitoring to be able to see where there's gaps or where there's additional damage and keeping us informed about their status. But then that doesn't stop just because the sun goes down. They reassess existing infrastructure, they reassign priority to different crews during the nighttime, and they make sure that they're ready to go as soon as the sun comes up the next day. If someone has a power outage, they have to make sure that even if they think that their neighbor has already reported it, just a simple call to 866-366-4357 can help make sure that they do indeed have your individual house on their list, and that helps them with their damage assessment processes. The Virginia Department of Emergency Management is my office's state counterpart, so they are always working on new ways to help us train, plan, and exercise. They offer us resources such as the sea, lake, and overland surges from hurricanes, another mouthful, the slosh modeling. It helps us look at the amount of rainfall we might see in inundation that we might see, and they're improving those resources as we speak. So this is going to have more data points, better maps, they're going to be able to add the ability to look at tropical storms and see what impacts are going to happen, and they are waiting for finalization of some key data points in the Chesapeake Bay Basin that are going to see some higher inundation. They're hoping to have that information ready, they hoped by the end of June, but here we are, so it should be any time now. But there's not going to be any changes to the existing evacuation plans or evacuation zones for this hurricane season. All of that will stay the same. They have rolled out a Hampton Roads Common Operating Picture Tool, so this is just a one-stop shop where all of the local EOCs can see what everybody else is doing, if we have states of emergency, if our EOCs are open or closed, status of shelters and so on, just another way to help make sure that we understand what everybody's doing. They've been doing updates to the Know Your Zone website to make it easier for the community to be able to see where their evacuation zone is. And they've reestablished the Flood Intelligence Unit, which is just a center point to gather information on tidal and river flooding and sharing that information with us. At the local level, we have been super busy since I joined the team early in the year. So we have rolled out the Ready Portsmouth Program. You have some of the handouts and materials that are available to your constituents if you'd like more. We are looking at this from an internal and external customer perspective, so we're starting as soon as somebody joins the City of Portsmouth team, they get a 20-minute brief from me about how to be prepared, because everybody's job is a part of our disaster response plan. So we focus on personal preparedness and the simple steps that they can do. We've been doing community outreach. We just actually talked to Highland Park or Highland, Biltmore, and Loxley Place earlier this week about general hurricane preparedness and awareness. We're getting ready to roll out. You are the help until help arrives, basically from the time you call 911 until the public safety first responders arrive, what can you do to help? And that will include a Stop the Bleed element, Narcan awareness, and hands-only CPR awareness. We're going to restart our Community Emergency Response Team program, which is teaching neighborhoods how to take care of themselves, basic first aid, how to use a fire extinguisher, how to put together an emergency supply kit, and so on. And again, the handouts that you have there in front of you. We have conducted a senior official workshop with leadership to go over the city's new emergency operations plan and to review the hurricane annex to make sure everybody understands what their roles are. We're working on annual shelter training with our partners with the American Red Cross to include social services, behavioral health, recreation and parks, libraries, and so on. We are revising the city's mass care plan, and we're going to be standing up a mass care work group, a mass feeding work group, and a work group focused on volunteer and donation management, so a lot of the wraparound mass care services. Rebooting the city emergency management page to outline risks and hazards so that the public is aware of what they should be thinking about, and making sure that we have multiple pathways to share emergency information throughout the course of a crisis. Just for a review, this is the location of our two pre-storm shelters, IC Norcom and Churchland Middle School. We have access to all of the other high schools and the middle schools for post-storm sheltering, and that gives us the opportunity to go out and do damage assessments and see what the community's need is if we need to open additional shelter sites. All of our sites are all-inclusive, meaning that we don't have a separate location for medical needs. The only separate location we have is for pets, and we send them to the Churchland Middle School location where police animal control oversee the pet shelter during times of crisis. We pull in a lot of different city stakeholders and then partner with the Red Cross, because Red Cross sets the gold bar, if you will, the standard for disaster sheltering. This is just a reminder of what our evacuation zones are on the left, so A is the light blue all the way to red being zone D, and then our evacuation routes. Our primary objective with this is to make sure that the public understands what the threat and hazard is. We want them to be able to make an informed decision that if the governor is saying we need to evacuate zone A, we want to make sure that they understand what zone A is and if they need to evacuate or not. And then our evacuation routes align to the VDOT primary routes that they maintain and keep open throughout the course of an incident. Really, one of the greatest things we can do is ensure we're getting information through trusted, verified, and vetted sources. So this is just a few of the ones that we recommend. Of course, the city government website, emergency management website, Virginia Department of Emergency Management. Many of the resources I gave you are available on ready.gov to include information for kids age-appropriate, planning for folks with access and functional needs, planning for pets. Ready.gov has a lot of really great resources available for us. Overall, we have a very well-documented history since at least 1664 of spectacular storms impacting our region. We have to plan every year as if this is going to be the year for the big one. Regardless of what the National Hurricane Center is predicting, it only takes one, and it only takes one to affect our community that ends up being impactful. This is my contact information. If you'd like me to come out and speak to any of your constituent groups, if you need additional copies of resources, anything at all, I'm more than happy to provide that for you. And that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions or provide any other information that you need.
Thank you, Ms. McCray.
You're very welcome.
Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Ms. McCray, right on time for this presentation, and welcome. I understand you just haven't been here a year yet?
Not yet. This is February.
Okay. Great work so far with the amount of information that you're restarting programs and getting the word out, speaking to the civic leagues, definitely needed. One thing about additional communication, I want to ask Mr. Carter, is it possible, because I see, I'm glad you provided the websites, and I see the local efforts, but for our citizens, can we get like some type of mailing communication, like a magnet where they can put on their fridge for emergency contact or the website? Like, how are we ensuring that the citizens know if there's an emergency, if they can immediately know what to do, where to go for a resource, like these great links I'm looking at on our website right now? How do the citizens know outside of our social media to go there? I always think about a magnet or something, refrigerated magnet or something that's very accessible for our citizens to have on hand, especially our senior citizens.
I have to give that some thought.
Okay.
You know, most people now want something electronic, I think. I'm not sure, and I have to do some research to do, but magnet is a thing.
I always think about like if electronic or any type of, if anything is not accessible. Like, sometimes I don't have service, you know, like service can be spotty, especially during an emergency situation. Just having it where they, in case they can't look it up on our website, that they know they have something that at least we, I like the information, oops, sorry, I like the information. I haven't seen all of it, but I see we have something, but something kind of very succinct, small, just that it's always available, that people can hold on to, put on their fridge, put it somewhere to know what to reach out to. I just want to throw that idea out, because I feel like the information on the website is, and the links are very helpful, it's just that in an emergency, if you can't get to that information, it would be.
I talked to our marketing group about that.
Okay.
They may be able to help us along with Ms. McCray here, pick them up with some ideas so we can put something.
Yeah, just kind of think about.
Just pull in somebody's hand.
Right, when we talk about communication. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
And if I can point out really quick as well, you have a separate document there, the elective officials guide, that's specifically for you all to outline how you can help support the manager and emergency management, outlining some of the state code and other resources that are available specifically for your input on the response to these types of incidents.
Councilwoman Hugo, then.
Councilwoman Bryant.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate the brief, Ms. McCray. So I got the hurricane scenario. What other scenarios does emergency preparedness already have, like in the can? And I'm thinking now, like Chesapeake had that mass shooting at Walmart a couple of years ago. Would we activate our emergency management team in that case? Or if we had a 9/11-like thing happen in Hampton Roads, do we have something in the can to address those scenarios?
Yes, sir. And jokingly, I plan for everything from armadillos to zombies, but yes, we have all sorts of plans and resources. A lot of what we do is consequence management, so we have plans in place to support mass care needs. We are a part of the Hampton Roads Urban Area Security Initiative, or the Hampton Roads UAWSE, which has a all-hazards emergency planning group, and there's a lot of regional planning that happens, so that includes things such as coordinating our emergency operations centers for large events. Specifically for acts of violence, we have a plan for Family and Friends Information Center, or a Family Assistance Center, where we can help the community get resources, reconnect with loved ones that may have been involved with the incident. We have an in-depth sheltering plan, but we're always looking to enhance, and we're always looking to build more partnerships. I know particularly since the snowstorm, we've had a special focus on our unsheltered homeless populations and learning how to best support them and get them the resources they need. But one of the primary goals, aside from pulling together the partners and the city partners that work together, it's also engaging and involving the citizens, because every citizen of our community has a responsibility to know what to do and to know how to help. And we certainly want to take advantage of any opportunity we can to educate them and better understand what their needs are, because we can write all the plans, but we want to make sure that they are actionable plans.
Okay, so I'm one of those citizens, and I'm a pretty well-informed citizen.
Yes, sir.
And I'm clueless. How do I find out more about what's in those plans and what, if anything, we should be communicating to the civic leagues or talking about amongst ourselves to get ready? I mean, it's a crazy world right now, and I confess, I mean, I knew what I was going to do in the shipyard. I have no idea what I do here.
I think we may need to have some council-specific training.
Yes.
If, you know, we can set some time where we can get you guys together so we can go over some of these things, because, you know, we got plans for just about everything, but the deal is, who all knows what to do in those situations?
Right.
And trying to educate you as it happens is not as effective as we can educate you before it happens.
Yes.
Yeah, so when the balloon goes up, we don't want to be learning at that point.
My point exactly.
And the other thing is, we don't want to be helping at that point if our help isn't help.
Right.
So staying out of the way might be the best help we can provide.
Sometimes that is, yes.
But it would be helpful, I think, to do exactly what you're talking about, Mr. Manager.
Okay. We'll get something scheduled through, uh, State Clerk, she'll help us with this.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Ms. McCray.
You're welcome.
Wondering if we have ever, or if other localities ever do sort of a registry to get names of vulnerable populations before an emergency event? Is that something that we do, or?
There's nothing in code that requires it. I'm not against it at all. In fact, I'm always for somebody having the opportunity to raise their hand and say, "Hey, I'm here." I want to be able to empower them to be able to do whatever it is that they need to do to be prepared and to introduce resources to them and make sure that they're connected. You know, we're fortunate in having a great relationship with the Health Department here, where pre-disaster, we can get de-identified data and figure out, you know, in census blocks, what kinds of medical vulnerabilities there are.
Right.
And then when we have a local emergency in place, the Health Department can provide more drilled-down information. One of the projects that I am trying to get up and going is developing basically an integrated coordinated care center, or an IC3, where we take departments that do case management on a day-to-day basis and bring them together and kind of offer a portal where people can raise their hand and say, "Hey, I need a little bit of extra help planning," or "I need help evacuating," and use those resources that they're used to, that are part of that normal daily support network, and leverage them. So that is one of the projects that I have on the very short-term horizon that we'd like to get up and going.
Wonderful. And actually, I'm going to take a suggestion that Councilwoman Thomas, you raised this in a conversation we had a while ago, it was about another issue, but aside from communicating with civic leagues, potentially reaching out through churches.
Yes.
Yes.
Which you'll get a large population that way, and I can't remember what we talked about.
Those behavioral health care services.
Okay. But it'd be also useful in this scenario to, outside of the civic leagues, to reach people and your community.
For sure, and that actually balances off of one of the projects that I'm working on with economic development, to do some outreach to the business community about business preparedness, business continuity, continuity of operation plans. And I envision being able to do basically a workshop that I'm calling a Plan and a Prayer, for lack of a better term, for the faith-based partners, to focus on the business side of being a faith-based provider, but then also to get a better understanding of who has large spaces, who has large parking lots, that we could do points of distribution, who has large congregations, that we could bring in hands and volunteers and resources. So that is part of the overarching holistic plan that I have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. McCray. And one, a couple of things I just wanted to add.
Yes, sir.
We have already done a Mayor's Minute on the hurricane season, and a Mayor's Minute is a weekly video presentation that I do, and we get information out to the community, and that's just another way to communicate. In addition, I'm sure you guys are connected to Mercy Chefs here in the City of Portsmouth, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because I know they do a lot of disaster feeding throughout the United States and the world, so, and they're a really good partner. They're very efficient in what they do, so.
Yes, sir.
Very good presentation, thank you for the information.
Thank you.
And let's hope we don't have one of those incidents happen here.
I prefer to just see you all for training and exercise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCray.
Thank you, Carter. You have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Russell. Yeah, there she is, behind you. Talk to us about the entertainment venues and some zoning language that we should consider. This has been a topic that we've talked about quite a few times, and we've got some things together here to give you some. And this is informational, nothing for you to act on today, but to start you to thinking about how we're thinking about moving this process forward. Dr. Russell?
All right, good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Dr. Russell.
I'm waiting for the mouse. I think I'm waiting for the mouse.
Hey, Dr. Russell. How are you?
Give it a second or two. It's hot enough for you.
I'm not here yet.
It is. Thank you so much. Okay. I want to share with. I want to share with, with you that our planning commission staff shared a work session with the planning commission at their June meeting regarding proposed amendments to our ordinance for entertainment establishments and event venues. And so, since that time, we have updated the proposed ordinance language, and we are sharing that update... Oh, sorry, wait a minute. With you this evening, and we are anticipating the schedule. So the planning commission will hold a public hearing on proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding the entertainment venues in our event centers. If the planning commission does approve the proposed language, then we are anticipating that you will have that language for your August 26 meeting. Thank you. So the purpose of the amendment is to revise the existing regulations, and in short, we believe that we're doing a lot of the regulation of these uses correctly, with the conditions that we routinely attach to the entertainment uses. What we're proposing to do is to add specific language for the regulation of our civic, social, and fraternal clubs, because that, we believe that that provides a, an opportunity to circumvent some of the regulations regarding our entertainment centers. And then we're also adding supplemental language in the ordinance for specific use permits. So all use permit applicants would have to adhere to the supplemental language unless in their application and review process, they ask that the planning commission consider and the city council approve modifications or revisions to that language. The language in the proposed draft ordinance is prescriptive as it relates to entertainment establishments, and then for event centers, it stipulates that they have to follow those same provisions or requirements. The amendment strengthened the permit revocation procedure process. More specifically, it includes a provision that if a specific venue that has received a use permit has two or more violent incidents in a 12-month period, that they automatically have a provision that the use permit would be reviewed again by city council, and renewed, or potentially renewed, and the language includes a provision for the zoning administrator for venues that don't require a use permit can revoke the zoning clearance that is approved. The specific ordinance sections that are amended in the language, use specific standards, revocation of certificates of permit, and includes a discontinuance of the use. And if a use is discontinued, they could not reapply for six months. Specific to our fraternal clubs, they must not operate in the same space as a restaurant or an entertainment venue. There's a seven-day waiting period for membership, and there's some obvious reasons for that you couldn't join on the same day that you would be partaking or frequenting a facility, and the guests are limited to those persons that are tied to that fraternal club or operation. Our entertainment establishments include operational limits, and so I want to stop here and emphasize this for a minute. The supplemental regulations include hours of operation across the board, Monday through Saturday, let me say Sunday through Saturday, midnight would be the closing time. An applicant could petition through their process, the planning commission, to recommend to council longer hours of operation, and that would be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. The applicant would have to present the merits for why a longer period of operation is necessary. And there are times that we believe that that would be appropriate, given where the use is located, what is adjacent to and around that area, and there are times that we believe that that would not be appropriate, and that would be reflected in the staff recommendation, and subsequent to the staff recommendation, the recommendation by the planning commission. You'll recall, we had an applicant recently that made an inquiry about what should be included in the security plan, and I should say, and let me stop and recognize Mr. Jeff Miller, as well as Mr. Trevon Boone, the three of us have been the primary parties that have developed the proposed ordinance language, and we've been very sensitive to the feedback that we've gotten from the planning commission and from the council public hearings about the items and regulations that we should be addressing this ordinance, or the proposed ordinance language. The security plan issue was, we were very sensitive to that. What is the guidance for that? And so the proposed language includes, it's not prescriptive that you must do these things, but you must address these things in the security plan that is submitted for review and approval. The ordinance language also stipulates that no third-party promoters or rentals, so you could not rent, say, the event center, and then subsequently, that, that, let's see, rent that space to another provider to host an event. Again, the event space banquet halls would be subject to those same provisions that are outlined in the ordinance language for the entertainment uses. We have included language, I'm not sure who brought this up, for soundproofing, that the provider or the applicant would have to demonstrate and show by architect and engineer that the building facilities, their points of ingress and egress have been soundproofed so that it is not a disturbance to adjacent property owners, and that would be a requirement of their certificate of occupancy. Enforcement actions align with the club and entertainment standards, and so for problem behaviors or nuisance behaviors, there are provisions for revocation. There are appeals that would be provided through our border zoning appeals, and multiple violent incidents would trigger, or would trigger a CUP subsequent review if that occurs within a 12-month period. So staff is recommending approval of the proposed ordinance amendment, in part because it enhances, we believe it enhances public safety, it clarifies the standards that would be applied for these uses citywide, and it strengthens our enforcement and compliance mechanisms. With that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Councilwoman Hugo, sir, you have a floor?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, appreciate the brief, Dr. Russell. Could we go back to the purpose? So it was suggested to me that, and this is by one of our neighbors who is the property owner of an event space, what about restaurants that have ABC licenses? What keeps them from being included in our consideration here? Don't we have issues with restaurants that stay open late and sell liquor? They aren't an entertainment establishment because they don't have live music, they're not an event space, they're not a club, but they're serving food and liquor, and does ABC allow them to stay open until 2:00 a.m.?
So, your, your question is what prevents them from being included in these...
Why shouldn't we consider restaurants with ABC licenses in this collection of, of things to tighten up on?
Why are they not just, why are this...
Yeah, so, so we got three kinds of things listed, why not fourth?
So, a restaurant that desires to have live entertainment would be included in this.
I get that.
And it's not that we didn't talk about it, we did talk about it. The, the three of us did speak at length about it, and it, it fell down to the frequency of incidents where restaurants are, are problems in terms of behaviors by patrons, and then it's how do you distinguish? You know, so we have a restaurant, or fast-food restaurants, or fine dining facilities, it's a, it's a gamut. And it doesn't, excluding restaurants from more stringent regulations at this time, doesn't preclude us from addressing restaurants more stringently in the future if we're seeing greater frequency of problem behaviors.
Okay, and, and do the ABC rules allow restaurants to stay open until 2:00 a.m.? Because we're putting, this would put operating hours in place for these, but if, I mean, what I'm, what I'm trying to get to here is, if we tighten up the rules on these things, the problem's just going to migrate to some other place where, where the rules are not tightened up, and then kind of the next place for it to migrate in Portsmouth, if we work on these three categories, are the, any other places that we allow to be open at 2:00 in the morning?
I need some help. Jeff, could you help me?
Jeff, why don't you come up forward?
Yeah.
She's going to use a lifeline here.
Help!
How many does she get?
It depends.
Yeah, I believe that Hampton is actually has some code provisions that regulate early closing of restaurants by midnight in certain districts. So I, I think that's a, that's a possibility. The other thing I'd point out is, you know, city council, when they issue a use permit, city council can revoke the use permit for violation of the conditions. Restaurants don't have use permits. So what can be done, what Norfolk did, and what we're proposing to do, is to have the zoning administrator have the power to revoke the zoning permit, which isn't a use permit, and so that's, it's on a different, a different level. And so zoning administrator, if there's non-compliance, can revoke the zoning permit. Then it would be six months before anybody could reapply for that restaurant space.
And so can the zoning director do that today, or do we need to do something here in order for us to be, have that authority, or for him to have that authority?
There needs to be amendment.
Yeah, okay. Well, friends, my vote would be, let's amend, and make sure that we just aren't chasing the problem from three places to a fourth. Okay, thank you. So, Dr. Russell, on the, on the civic, social, fraternal club slide, the first bullet must operate in the same, must not operate in the same space as entertainment or restaurant. Can you help me understand what that means? Because I guess my sense is, these private clubs don't need entertainment licenses, they don't need restaurant licenses, they're just operating as a club. And so if they bring food in, they bring liquor in, they don't sell it. It's Wild West. True or no?
Can I do it? You want to try it, or you want me to do it?
I'm going to defer to you, and I'm, I'll share some information specific in the language.
For civic clubs, if you own a restaurant, okay, you can't be a restaurant until 2:00 a.m., or 12:00 a.m., and then a civic club after 2:00 a.m., or when you close as a restaurant.
Okay.
If you're going to have a fraternal or civic club, it has to have its own venue, apart and separate from any established venue that's already there, is what this is talking about.
Okay. All right, so I'm, so I'm tracking with you, so that, but that still doesn't prevent a private club from serving food, liquor, and live entertainment, right?
Well, only if they can have live entertainment.
Doing pretty much whatever they want to inside their...
I don't think they can have live entertainment, if I'm right on that one, but they can't serve food, they can't serve drinks, you know what I mean? As long as they're not selling, you know, then it's like having a house party. You know, you can have a party at your house, you can serve food, you can serve drinks.
And, and, and there's no operating hours on these places either, right? It's like all night long till the dawn's early light?
Right.
There are no operating hours, they would have a zoning...
Are we proposing operating hours for these folks?
We're not. We are proposing three regulations related to alcohol sales and, and membership, and then who can patronize the facility. The zoning provision of the proposed draft language does allow the zoning administrator to revoke the zoning clearance permit in the event that it is a nuisance operation. And so this could be that as well. The question relative, can they be an entertainment venue, is that the language that says that it can't operate both, can't be a private club and an entertainment venue, so they could not apply for an entertainment use permit, and, and be a private club on the same property.
But, but I mean, if you have permission to do anything you want, why would you ever apply for anything, except I want to be a private club, and, and therefore, there are no rules that apply?
Well, there are rules that apply, I mean, you, you have to be a member of the club, we talked about that in there.
Okay.
You can't join the same night that you are, try to get into the club. You can't have a club that is on the premises of a, of a, another established business. So there, there are some rules that apply, but I think you're looking for restrictions as far as time is concerned.
Well, yeah, I mean, we're, we're putting other rules in place for entertainment venues and for event venues and for, well, those two specifically.
Right.
And, and so why would I ever apply to do either of those when I can apply to be one of these things, and, and then I got, I can stay open all night, I can hand out liquor and food all night, and I can create trouble all night. That's where, where I intend to, to, you know, that's my behavior.
I think there's one fundamental difference. One is being opened up to the public. So if you have a club or any other night facility that's open to anybody, now you have a situation where you're saying that there's a fraternal social organization that has a limited pool of members, and then you're restricting it even more so by saying, oh, you can't become a member tonight by showing up and paying X amount of dollars, you got to wait a week before you can even do that. And you don't have the DJ, you don't have the karaoke, so you're, you're limiting the types of folks who are going from one event to another event, and they're supposed to be members anyway. So the real question becomes, what's the enforcement mechanism for this? How, who is going to be determining whether or not the people who show up are in fact the ones who are actual members? And are there, anybody there to say, are you really going to stop somebody who had money to come in today and say, oh, you have to come back seven days from now? That's the real question, is whether or not you're going to have the enforcement apparatus to do the thing that you're saying you're going to do.
Okay, so, so I'll boil it down to one specific question then. What do we think is different about these places that we should allow them to op, to operate all night long? Why wouldn't we impose the same closing hours on them as we're intending to impose on entertainment venues, I mean, entertainment establishments and event venues?
Don't have an answer to that one, I have to dig through it.
Okay, so maybe we need to talk about that.
Yeah.
Because if we're putting rules in place, now's the time.
All right, nothing precludes, we're, we're suggesting, nothing precludes modifying that before you vote on it here.
So, what, two more slides onto the event space. Sorry, I got a, I got a bunch of questions.
That's fine.
I assume that's why we only had two things today.
Thanks. So, is it clear today, or does it need to be clarified, that who is responsible to follow the rules for event spaces? And here's why I'm asking. So, so unlike a, a restaurant or a entertainment thing, now you got a property owner, and you got an event venue operator typically, so, so you got two parties. Who's, who's responsible to follow the rules?
Vote.
Okay, so, does, does, is it spelled out there so that the, that the property owner... Okay, so does, is it spelled out there so that the, that the property owner understands what he or she is responsible for? And the event venue operator is understanding what he or she is responsible for in black and white?
Well, it's, it's, it is black and white because of the code. So we enforce against the property owner. So the, so for example, the required language or the proposed language that states if there are two incidents in a 12-month period, a violent incident where the police are called, the event space owner could have leased his facility to two different unrelated entities, but they're still responsible. And they would, could potentially lose their CUP for being a nuisance operator, just by virtue of who they're electing to lease to. So that should control or minimally influence the lease agreements and the less, the parties that they lease to.
I wanna bet you five bucks that we can find a whole bunch of event venue property owners that think that it's the operator who's responsible. And the property owner's job is only to find people to rent his property. And once the rent is paid, I'm out of it. You got an issue? Take it up with the person that's running the place and break in the rules. So if it ain't in black and white crystal clear, we need to put it black and white crystal clear, in my opinion.
We need to actually state owner.
Well, whatever we need to do to make it crystal clear, who is responsible. Because at the end of the day, if we get this, which is a lot of what we're getting, then we got no fighting chance of getting compliance.
Well, I think it doesn't really matter who you point your finger at. The point is, when we show up, we're gonna enforce. Now, if you, you're the person that rented it tonight, we're gonna shut you down, but we're gonna deal with the owner of the property also. And so it's not, you point all you want.
Yeah.
But you're still, you're gonna shut down tonight, and we're gonna, if there's a citation where it's gonna be issued, it's gonna be for the owner of that.
So maybe we're talking past each other. Because most of the places that we have seen use permits for event venues have not been with the property owner, they've been with whoever is intending to operate the event venue. So Billy owns the building.
Okay.
And Sally is applying for a use permit. Is it Billy or is it Sally? Sally's the one that's booking the party and making the arrangements and hopefully getting the ABC taken care of and all that stuff. The property owner's sitting at home watching the football game at midnight, and Sally's the one who's there actually running the show.
Right, and basically, to the point, look, who we talk to are the applicants, right? On a public hearing, that's who we talk to. Fair?
Yes, most of the time, that's accurate.
Most of the time, that's who we talk to. So that's really what he's saying. The applicant versus the owner, right?
Right.
Because we've had a scenario at our public hearing where one of the owners tried to speak, the owner is not the applicant.
Right.
So I think that's kind of where...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed you there. Because I was thinking applicant and then the person that's actually using it that night versus applicant and the owner.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So again, if it's crystal clear, great. If it ain't crystal clear, could we please make it in black and white, crystal clear, who's on the hook? Next, permit revocation. Okay, so it's good that we're addressing hours of operation. So what about parking? So we have an event venue application that's been to planning commission, it's on its way to us. There was a whole lot of discussion at planning commission that when they up their use permit from, I'm sorry, from restaurant to entertainment, the building official says the capacity inside the building can be up from 80 to 120. Well, there's 20 parking spaces. I don't know how 20 parking spaces accommodates 80, but it sure as heck isn't gonna accommodate 120. But in all of the discussion that I listened to during planning commission, parking isn't even really an issue. The only issue that's come up is the neighbors who live around the place who all say, hey, if 120 people actually show up, they're gonna be parking in my grass and clogging my road, and the fire truck ain't gonna be able to get through. And that's a legitimate concern. And best I can tell, we've kind of erased the parking consideration from consideration in these things. And it's not the same for everybody, because there are places in, in shopping centers where they got more parking than you can shake a stick at, but there are other places where parking is a consideration. And I think the only condition that the planning commission really talked about was, you guys that want this entertainment thing are gonna have to police the parking. Well, guess what?
It's not gonna happen.
How's that gonna work?
Well, the, the language in the draft ordinance requires or will require that the security plan address parking. The, one of the last applicants, there was a condition that required that they have only on-site parking, no, no parking on any of the neighboring streets and roads, and their security personnel are to monitor that. And that is, we believe, appropriate and suitable language to include or suggest that applicants include in their security plans. Additionally, that language said that they could have arrangements with adjacent private commercial property owners for overflow parking.
Okay, I guess, I'll be interested to see the language, because like I said, some, some cases, no big deal. But there are some cases like this one where there's gonna be a long line of people waiting to come up to the day, to the microphone to complain. Please don't, don't approve this, because they don't have parking and they don't have a solution for parking. I'm pleased to hear that you all have at least thought about what the template for the security plan is supposed to look like. The folks that we deferred at the last meeting called me afterwards and said, I don't, I don't know what a security plan is supposed to contain. I called the police department and they told me, we don't know either. And so they're frustrated because they don't know what to put in their security plan. So maybe if we can communicate out to the folks that are in the hopper.
Okay.
These are the elements, at least, of things that you need to address in your plan, that would be helpful to them. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilman Tellez, then, Councilman Tom.
I forgot my question. Come back to it.
Really? I will come back to it.
Well, I don't have a question. I just wanted to add on to the conversation that Councilman Hugo has already stated. And I think one point that you're driving home with these different considerations and scenarios, when we're talking, I don't know how to put this, but when we're talking about the changes to our ordinances and codes, we're assuming a lot that people will do what they say they're gonna do. And I think the consideration to Mr. Challenge's point is, in lieu of enforcement, let's say we, we have enforcement, but we don't have enforcement, I'm just gonna put that out there. You're not, you can't enforce 24/7, right? So in lieu of that, coming from the standpoint of those scenarios that Councilman Hugo is bringing up, when people, not the people that are gonna follow what it lays out, but how do we prevent the people that are not gonna follow? And I think the parking is a perfect example of that. Even if you put it in the security plan, it doesn't mean that people aren't gonna park in residential. They can say their plan is to get agreements with commercial properties, adjoining commercial properties. And I believe that could be true. But I think when we're talking about the changes that we're trying to make, coming from that standpoint of, but what if they don't do what they say they're gonna do in approaching it with that mindset, is I think kind of what Councilman Hugo was trying to walk through on some of those. And I think while we're in this exercise, approaching it from that mindset. Not saying you didn't, but just really kind of honing in on that. That's all.
Can I respond some to that?
Yes.
One of the things that we're talking about as we organize this enforcement team is that exact thing. Because what we're planning to do is have a way of gathering, going out, especially like when we have a new venue that opens up or something like that. That would be a nice time for our enforcement team, just to roll by and see what it looks like that night, how they're handling of those things. Because what we're talking about is building a checklist, so we have all the things that we're saying is gonna be the requirement. So we're going and we're looking for these things to make sure that you're actually doing what you say you're gonna do. Now, no, we can't be there every night that you're open, but we do plan to be there at some point while you're open.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So you've had a couple of provisions in there. One for a seven-day wait, but you also allowed guests in with a member. So this, am I understanding that correctly? Because that says I can just walk in that night anyway, even despite the seven-day rule. So I'm a little concerned that it's really not gonna be effective having the seven-day waiting period. It's like it doesn't matter that you put that in there. If you, if the member ties to another member, oh, my buddy's inside of me, call him, he'll come get me and walk me in. Done. Seven-day wait doesn't matter. It's one of my concerns. The second one was soundproofing. So I went by one of the venues that's applying. They have a single door that when it's shut, it's soundproofed. But as people enter and go in and out, it's not soundproofed, and the sound spills out horrendously into the neighborhood. I wonder if our soundproofing measures that need to be specified to say it must occur with at least one set of doors open, in other words, it encourages them to have a building code that has a double door in there in order to enforce the sound ordinance for the neighborhood. The single door, the way y'all would check it, oh, all the doors are shut, it's fine. That's not the way these venues operate. There's people that stand in the doors, hold them open, have a cigarette, do whatever they need to do with the doors wide open, and then all of a sudden our soundproofing doesn't matter to the neighborhood. The third thing was violent events. The way y'all listed violent events in it, it's only if the violent events occur within the venue. Well, we're having trouble with violent events occurring, starting in the venue, but not being recognized until they're out in the street and therefore aren't categorized with that business. So I'm wondering, when I saw your presentation before in planning, the numbers that you showed in the planning meeting for the violent events was dramatically different, way lower than we are seeing in terms of, out at the police, in terms of what's actually happening in that venue. So I'm wondering, is there some way to tie the events that just happened because of that ruckus that started within that venue of them being tied to it? Your presentation only said, oh, we've only got these three venues, they've only had one event, when we know, on this council, that, oh, some of them have had 10 or 12 that had been tied to it. And the numbers didn't match to me. So I'm a little concerned about enforcement, that the events be tied with that business that might occur because of something that started within there. I want to second the thing about parking that Admiral Hugo brought up, is that we already have serious problems in my neighborhood, near my neighborhood, with one restaurant that is, doesn't give a hoot, excuse me, I have to choose my words, the mayor, the mayor might have to correct me again, he's been gentle about it. But we're having a difficult time with the parking already with one of these venues. And I can't share the name here in this venue, but I can share the location with you so that you can actually see what's going on after the meeting. So I'm very, very concerned, like, we were just told here that the parking is a major issue. And they might have a plan to enforce it, but what if somebody parks in front of a neighbor's house? Well, in front of my house, from that venue, do I have the right to have it towed if it's in front of my house? And then if I go over to the restaurant and knock on the door and say, hey, somebody, you're not enforcing that, I'm gonna get retaliation on my house. I don't want retaliation. So I need y'all, I need us as the city to enforce that so that I am, as a citizen, safe from that retaliation. I don't know if you want to address any of these, but those are my comments. I'm so glad you're addressing this. This is a hot issue. Thank you so much for bringing it.
We're taking copious notes. I see Jeff taking those as well.
You're doing wonderfully, thank you.
We'll continue to, we'll continue to modify this language until we're comfortable moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Dr. Russell. And Mr. Miller, you both provided some information to me earlier in the week that I wanted to come back to a couple of things. One is sort of related to the parking. My email to you this week was about the issue of distance separators. And I've read through the documentation that you provided, that those were eliminated in 2020 for several different reasons and different scenarios. And so as somebody stepping into this now, and you know this was raised from a citizen, with the distance separators, which as I understand is the distance between a business and a residential area, with those removed, and again, I understand why they were moved for overall planning in the comprehensive plan, but is there an opportunity to revisit those related to these types of businesses? To be specific, would that be helpful in solving something like the parking issues where we have more of a space between a business and residences?
It's not precluded by the Code of Virginia, so it is, as I said, it's open, it's an open opportunity. The answer's yes. There are other tools that we can use as well. There was an operator recently, within a week or so, that, and it was, it's odd, because it was the operator that inquired about residential parking permit programs. And, you know, there are tools like that that we could use to deal with those problem behaviors too. So I hope I've answered your question, but we definitely captured that parking and...
I guess this goes to Councilwoman Thomas's point of, let's assume that likely at midnight, if you roll up to one of these places, you might just be looking for a parking spot and make a decision in that moment. So even with a parking plan in place, maybe revisiting this idea of distance separators would just eliminate that altogether. And again, looking for just what the professional opinion is here, it's certainly more complex than just what our initial conversation was. A couple other questions for you. The data you provided earlier too shows that we've had 21 requests for these types of businesses in the last three and a half years, which is high. Is that fair?
Yes.
Why, why, in your opinion, is that the case?
Well, I think, I think Dr. Dobson spoke at the presentation we did to council when we talked about numbers, and they were, the numbers were low in terms of violent incidents. It's like, I think it was three, you know, there weren't any. But I, I think the market is, is a good indicator for why this is happening. Because if there weren't a belief by the entrepreneur that they're gonna get a, you know, a profitable return on their investment, they would not do it.
Right.
At that earlier council presentation, one of the comments that was made is that smaller venues are favorable because they're more, cost-effective is not the right word, but they're just more affordable than the larger venues. And so that's, that's another reason why you're seeing more of these. And so it might, an event center could be a baby shower, it could be a birthday party. It's not necessarily a party.
Right.
You know, so we think those are possible explanations for why we're seeing more of these.
So it's a sign of growth for the city, certainly, which, which is a good thing. In our discussion about public safety, though, of course, we're trying to balance growth, and we are just lacking public safety resources right now, and that is a concern. So we're striving to find this balance. So tying this back to the violent issue, we've defined two or more violent incidents in a 12-month period. So how do we define a violent incident? Is it appropriate to only say violent incidents? What if I have 10 less violent incidents? Is that cause for, that's certainly overextending our public safety resources. So is that something we need to consider?
So you, you don't have the language, I know, because we're still working on it the way, but, and I'll just read a portion of it. It says, if two or more violent incidents, as determined by the police department, occur on or in direct connection to the establishment within... on or in direct connection to the establishment within 12, within any 12-month period, the zoning administrator shall initiate proceedings for the automatic reconsideration of the establishment's use permit by city council." So it's as determined by the police department.
Okay. That was another one of my questions. So we're, we're looping the police in here to evaluate the level of violence, for lack of a better term, at one of these locations. Police are communicating with zoning, and that triggers this process? Or is there an intermediary? Is that, is that how the process is?
This is a new process.
Okay.
That I, I am hopeful that will be tied into our new enforcement team.
Okay.
Project, that's what I'll call it. And it will be a collective decision, but the magic number is two.
Okay.
So two, it initiates the use permit review.
And just to clarify, we're allowing the police to define what they consider violent?
Yes. It would have to be a rapport.
Okay.
And, yes.
Okay. Considering the trend, upward trend of these types of businesses coming for planning commission and before council, is there ever a scenario where we might consider capping these requests? Is that something that planning would even consider? Or does the entrepreneurship of the people in our city just, if you think you're going to make money off of this, good for you, we'll consider it?
Well, you can always, you know, consider limiting types of businesses. You know, I get asked, well, you got so many car washes.
Right.
Well, you have so many car washes because car washers are making money. You know what I mean? And at the point where the market is oversaturated with car washes, we're going to stop having car washes. And that, you know, if we're waiting on the market to correct itself, then that is one thing. But if you're, if you're targeting something that you don't want in your community, then there's always the ability to limit the amount of those establishments in your community. That is a, that's a tool that you can use.
Right. Because a car wash is most likely not going to strain our public safety resources.
Right.
So the thought here is, if we're, if we're really trying to address public safety, and, and maybe that's for right now, maybe our public safety booms in the next five years. I certainly hope it does, and then we can revisit that cap. But curious if that's something that we should be also discussing.
The whole purpose of this is to get it in front of you guys so that we know how to start kind of guiding this forward. This is not the finished product.
Right.
Hey, this is what we got. What do you think? You know what I mean?
Right. We're mapping here, and I think this council's in agreement that we're mapping a safer city, and we're looking for different ways to do that. And I wholly appreciate all of your answers to all of these questions, because it is, it's very important, and it's, it's certainly complicated. I just want to make sure, before I give up my time, that, sorry. Last question. Let's say something goes forward, two violent incidents occur, they go to Mr. Boone, who's our zoning administrator. What does that timeline look like? Where, does it immediately trigger, doors closed, shutdown, we will evaluate from there? Or is there a continuance of operation while we investigate? It has to go through a particular process and maybe even potentially end up in an appeal? Could you describe that for us?
Sure. Let me just read the proposed language.
Okay.
As it, as it's drafted today. The zoning, so what I've read before about the 12 months and the police department, that's the first two sentences. "The zoning administrator shall notify the owner and operator in writing, and the matter shall be docketed for review by city council within 60 days of notification. In conducting its review, city council may revoke, amend, or impose new conditions on the use permit if deemed advisable in city council's legislative discretion to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare." So that's the process as it's defined in the ordinance. So it would just be city council, not be planning commission.
Okay.
And so within 60 days, it would be reviewed, approved, or denied.
Okay.
What is the condition of the business in the meantime?
The language, it doesn't say, it doesn't say it's closed, or it's, I mean, we might want to conclude that.
Attorney, attorney Challenger, go ahead, Jeff.
Well, I'm saying, you could add language to the effect that the two incidents would result in the temporary closure of the business, using the zoning administrator's enforcement powers, and then it would go to council.
I think certainly that would potentially save some people.
I think you probably have to shrink that review window then, if you're going to close it.
Yeah. Again, we're looking at protecting citizens, so whatever we can do to tighten that up would be okay.
So one other thing I would add is that those violent incidents could also trigger ABC. And ABC could have a situation where they temporarily shut the place down, set up a hearing for that incident, and give them an opportunity to plead their case as to whether it should be reopened as well. So although we have our internal process, that doesn't stop ABC from temporarily shutting the place down immediately after the incident.
So they could potentially be happening at the same time?
Yes. It could be shut down right after the incident occurred, and then there's a hearing that had to occur with ABC, in which they, the owner of that operation, would have an opportunity to plead their case as to why it should be open or not open, or there's a hearing.
Thanks, thank you all. Thank you.
Just a quick question, Dr. Russell. While we were discussing just all the different viewpoints, one viewpoint I think might be missing that, I'm not, I don't know if it's missing, but I wanted to ask you, have we heard, like, some input from some of the current operators of these type of businesses? Just to get their feedback about potential, we're prioritizing public safety while also balancing business, right? So have we had any input from current operators of these businesses? Or are we waiting for them to come to the public hearing and provide input?
So we have, as a team, discussed this.
Okay.
Typically with the zoning ordinance amendments, we would reach out to stakeholders, and a public engagement effort would be part of the process, about 30 to 45 days. Because there's some sense of urgency about moving this forward, and we have two applications that are awaiting action on this, and another one that is coming forward for your consideration, we did not. The first ad regarding this was left for the July 1 planning commission meeting. And then, you know, operators, they watch the planning commission meetings, they watch the city council meetings, they know that we're proposing some amendments. One of the questions that we are getting are, do the, will the proposed changes impact applicants who are already in the review and approval process? Some of the, initially, we were repeating the language in the conditions, and so it was going to be the same standards. The language is getting more stringent. It's not necessarily a bad thing, it's just, you know, it's just getting more stringent. So the provisions that would apply to, apply to operators that are currently in the queue aren't necess, they're not the supplemental use permit conditions, but those enforcement provisions related to revocation of a zoning permit would be applicable. Thank you.
I'm going to ask the Councilman Tillage to have the floor, because he hasn't had a chance to speak yet. Then I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So to that question, in regards to applicants that are in the queue, if there are people that already have, or operators already have permits today, it would be the same situation? It would be, basically, the consequences of not following, not so much so the other issues, correct?
The permit revocation processes.
Got you. So we doubt that that will take effect for them as well?
For the zoning permit, I'd have to defer to Mr. Miller for the use permit. Use permits, use permit specific standards for commercial uses. So those are supplemental that everybody would have to follow.
Yeah, I think it would, you'd have to evaluate the specific use permit individually.
So if I've been a business owner in Portland for the last 10 years, and I've had my use permit and maintained my business, but let's say next week I have some situations that occur, the next month I have some more situations that occur, do I now fall under these new rules that council has adopted that I have two incidents? And now I have to come before council, or the zoning administrator can check what the grandfathered in was currently existing?
It would really depend on the specific circumstance, but I think that you would have violated the conditions of your use permit as it is, because all use permits for these establishments have a condition that the chief of police can respond to circumstances like that. And then the way to resolve that is very similar to the zoning administrator way. It's, the chief of police can initiate with a letter to the zoning administrator a potential revocation of use permit.
So basically, these things already exist, we just haven't been enforcing. That's what it sounds like.
We're, what's proposed here is tightening things up considerably.
Got you. Okay. So my next question is in regards to the entertainment establishment slide, where it talks about no third-party promoter rentals. Can we define third-party promoters? Because would that be a actual LLC coming in being a promoter? Would that be DJ Joe Blow down the street, who's an individual who has a contract with the entertainment establishment to host a party?
Yes, we can.
All right. And then the next thing in regards to the civic and social fraternity clubs, I think I understand where you all come from in regards to this, not taking space, not cohabitating in the entertainment or restaurant situation, environment. So basically, a civic, social fraternity club would basically, in order for them to work the way, to have all their full authorities, they would basically need to build their own privately owned building. Because if I'm a fraternity and I go to an entertainment establishment, I'm now falling under the rules of the entertainment establishment, correct?
Yes.
So in order for me to have all the effect that we talked about earlier, my social club would have to own the building in which I'm hosting the events?
Or, or...
You don't necessarily have to own it.
Well, or leasing it.
Leasing it.
But, but not leasing it at an entertainment facility. Because if I go to Party Place ABC, that is a entertainment establishment in the city, I would have to fall under the guidelines that the city has for Party Place ABC, not my authority as a fraternity club.
Yeah, I think that's correct.
That is.
Got you. All right. Thank you.
Councilman Dunn.
I'm concerned about the safety of my administrator who would do the enforcement if they were the sole person that, I mean, there's some dark people that would do bad things. I would not like that responsibility to be only on our, I like our enforcement person, and I'd like him to feel safe in there too. So I'd like, not that sole responsibility to fall on him, but it to be more distributed.
Can I jump on that just a little bit? I think...
City manager Carter, you have the floor.
We do have a team of people that would do this now, as with the chief or as with our code administrator. His name would be on the letter, but it's not up to him to go out and enforce this alone.
According to the way I'm reading this, that's the person that can shut them down.
Right.
Yeah. That responsibility lies on that person.
But again, I would not send him out there by himself. Remember, we're talking about an enforcement team.
Okay.
Not just a zoning administrator, go do this. That's not the way we would do this. That's what I'm saying. The team will go out. If he noticed something in his purview, then that's when that, he can take effect. Same thing, the police will be there, code enforcement will be there, our fire marshals will be there, our health department will be there. There's a team of people that go out to do this.
I understand that, and that's the way you would enforce them, but as you've always said, you want these things to operate when you're not here. I'd like that word, I'd suggest that we consider that word in the document, also reflect that philosophy that you're displaying right now, so that it doesn't develop differently if you're, if you're not here, if we're not here. Safety is my number one concern for our employees.
Okay. I understand what you're saying.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
So I've been listening to the dialogue here, and a couple of things I, one of my colleagues, we all need to understand, I think, with this process. We, we as a council engaged in this, this direction, and to my knowledge, I've been on council now for seven years, we have never taken this type of approach since I've been on council, in terms of dealing with issues as it relates to violence or zoning, as it relates to these types of entities and organizations. So the first thing I want to do is, is say to the folks who have worked very hard to put this information together, is that you guys have done an amazing job.
Amazing.
And I say that because, you know, we can sit here and talk about, or ask questions about enforcement and all that stuff, and that's, that's, that's an important component. But at the end of the day, I think a couple of takeaways that I heard was, we don't have all the answers today. We are moving deliberately in a way that I believe will have more accountability, and will have a process in place, and we will have a strategy to deal with those issues as they arise. We understand that there is going to be more work done. One example, I was listening to, you know, the parking issue. Well, I have been by a number of venues, and parking, particularly in the community, can be an issue. At the end of the day, I think our neighbors will let us know if they have situations where they can't get into their homes and other things. But I guess what I'm trying to say is, we have to let some of this stuff evolve. We don't have all the answers today. And absolutely, the safety of our staff and everyone else is important. I like the fact that we are standing up an enforcement team now that is going to come under the direction of our city manager, and so there will be more opportunity for collaboration. It's important. It's important that we do this the right way. So I think we're all passionate about public safety, and that's understandable. But at this end of the day, we have to let the process work itself out, make, make those decisions based on what we know our needs are, and I think we're going to be okay. So thank you all for the work that you've done thus far. We look forward to the follow-up and changes in the language, perhaps that has been recommended today. But make no mistake about it, we, we know that we are moving in the right direction as it relates to holding folks accountable, putting the right rules in place. And from time to time, there may be some adjustments and changes we will have to make throughout this process. But we're not going to get it all right in this one document. We're going to have to go through a couple iterations, but we have the desire and the commitment, and we have the professionals to bring us the answers. So thank you, Dr. Russell, and your team, Attorney Challenger, Attorney Miller, and certainly my good friend sitting behind me right here, the zoning administrator. I just want to let you know that we appreciate your efforts.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our presentation.
Moving right along, city council liaison report. Do we have any? Well, I have one. I recently attended the United States Conference of Mayors conference in Tampa. I was there from Wednesday to Sunday, had a lot of opportunity to meet some very important people and interesting people, sat in some really in-depth presentations that dealt with crime and violence, affordable housing, attainable housing. So we'll talk more about some of those things as we go forward. But overall, a good trip. Tampa was, was hot, and the mayor of Tampa really treated us really well. Interestingly enough, the mayor of Tampa, Jane Cantor, was a former police chief. So her and I had a number of conversations about public safety and how you get to making your city better. So I'll share some of that information in her report back. All right. Well, that can, that concludes our public work session. We do have a need to go into a closed session, so I would ask that my colleague, Councilman Hugo, please read the closed meeting motion.
Okay. I move to go...
Okay. I move to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A8 for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel employed by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel specifically regarding shootings in the city.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Dr. Dotson?
Yes.
Mr. Hugo?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
Thank you.
We are inclosed.
Sir, I hereby move that each council member certify that to the best of his or her knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting just concluded.
Thank you, sir. Do you have a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bryant?
Yes.
Dr. Dotson?
Yes.
Mr. Hugo?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
Thank you.
This session is adjourned. We will reconvene at 7:25.